Henrietta City Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty twenty five, six thirty P M. Civic Center, one fifteen South Forest Street. Please stand for the invitation. Stand in with you.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
You have Jennifer.
Yes.
Yes. Item number four, discuss act to approve twenty twenty four state aid agreement for Henrietta Public Library.
Question to approve that's a hundred percent variant libraries that was there every year.
Second.
Move the second approval by item number four, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number five, discuss act on approval right of way access agreement between the city of Henrietta and Dobson Technical Inc. This is for fiber optic internet that we wanted to put in.
They would you explain that a little bit to everybody?
Yeah, it's a it's a internet service that's wanting to come to our communities. And every resident will have the option, just just another choice of what internet service you like to have. They'll be bringing to your house through right of ways and needs much to our city. Me and the city attorney, we got with Dobson Fiber and had a meeting with them. Any agreement that you guys have received, anything that we did not like, they've changed for us. And any kind of damage to any of our water lines, sewer, storm drains, we can either fix or they can fix, but a hundred percent paid for if we have issues.
And they're the only ones that can do that percent of payback turn.
So we have one other and we just got their agreement Friday. The agenda went out and we're reviewing it right now and then we'll we'll have it on the next meeting.
This will be a fee equal to five percent of the gross revenues that Dobson collects on that fiber will be paid to the city.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
It's been moved to the second to approve item number five, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number six, discuss act to reappoint Jill Francis to Henrietta Planning and Zoning Board.
Motion to approve.
Move the second approved item number six, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number seven, discuss act to reappoint Jason Lilly to Henrietta Planning and Zoning Board.
Motion to approve.
So move the second to approve item number seven, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number eight, discuss act to reappoint Kenny Berry to Henrietta Planning and Zoning Board.
Motion to approve.
Move the second approved item number eight, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number nine, discuss act on recommendation by Henrietta Parks Recreation and Tourism Board to allow the Chamber of Commerce to use Nicholas Park for Jim Shoulders Rodeo, August thirtieth and August thirty first, twenty twenty five. Move the second approved item number nine, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number ten, discuss act on recommendation by Henrietta Parks Recreation and Tourism Board to approve option number two for advertising the focus magazine featuring tourism in Henrietta to be paid out of hotel motel tax.
Motion to approve.
Discussion on that.
Yes, I'd like to say the first time I let this go, because I didn't see that it had that great of value for the city of Henrietta, but I know that this other group, this side group of the parks and recreation, they they've wanted to take this up and they've created some new ideas and they'll have some existing future dates to draw people to town, which I thought might be, and shouldn't be a great idea, so I I'll show you that I changed my mind here.
So this will be a total of two thousand four hundred twenty nine dollars for option number two, this was given in the back.
I don't have that.
Yes.
Okay, so moving to second to approve item number, well, ten, poll please. Is it ten?
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number eleven, discuss act on recommendation by Henrietta Parks Recreation and Tourism Board to allow Tullit Vega Events Inc. to use the gazebo park for the Hallmark Christmas event on December fifth of six twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
That different?
That's the same one, right?
Same.
Yeah, that's true.
So move the second approved item number eleven, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
I want to discuss this for a second before I vote.
Yes, sir.
We also wanted to tag that in the future that we will leave it up to Christmas, all the decorations and things that relate to Christmas lighting and we'll have that down, but at the latest, January fifteenth, is the time of the cold weather.
Make a motion.
Steve made a motion. Do you make a motion? So that we amend that motion as soon as possible.
If you want to add what Vernon said.
That's fine. So the motion to approve and to make sure they have all the quality decorations cleaned up and off the property by January fifteenth. Okay.
Your second. So move the second to approve item number eleven, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number twelve, discussion by Randall Fuller regarding the beta property located four oh five North Eleven Street. I don't see him here. No action. Item number eleven, discuss discussion by Monique Williams regarding the beta property located four seventeen East Gun Street.
Present.
Yes ma'am, you have something you want to discuss?
I do. Purchased the property at the the auction in June, two years ago, well, almost two and a half years ago. It wasn't mentioned that the house was condemned when I purchased it. In the time of the two and a half years that I've owned the property, I I've hired people, I live in California, so I have to get on the phone, call people, and have it fixed. But there's a neighbor there, Greg, and he runs everybody away that I sent over there, I've had a garbage, they said the house been empty for like thirteen years. I mean, it was it was horrible, I sent picture in the email when I contacted you guys and I've had a garbage dropped in front, had it cleaned out, it was so much trash in the house, it was to the ceiling. I've had it all removed, I've had all of the trees trimmed, but I had to come to town to have that done because everybody that steps on the property, he runs them off. He tells them that the house is going to be knocked down, I don't know why she had you over here, she doesn't even live here, I don't even know how he know I live in California, but I've only been here twice. And that was just to go to the auction and I came back to try to fix up the house, because I've been on phones calling, sending people over there to try to beautify the house, to bring up the neighborhood, also to be able to fix the house up so someone can live in it. But I haven't been able to do that because every time I send somebody there, he makes them leave or he calls the code enforcement and they all end up leaving. And so I haven't been able, so I'm here, I flew all the way out here from Sacramento, California, to ask if I I can have time to fix up this house, I'm going to keep coming because if I'm not here, he stops everybody. You know.
Have you called the police?
No, I I haven't called the police because I would send my cousin, she lives here, you know, and I'm like, can you just drive over there, she lives in Old Mogie, can you drive over there? That gentleman keeps running people over, you know, and telling them to get out the yard and when I first came and I when I first called, I sent somebody, I called a company that was on Google and I sent them to clean it out, he called code enforcement and I ended up having to talk to him like, okay, he was telling him, she don't even live here, that's not true. Yeah.
Yeah.
Greg Henry called me once and the reason I went after him because there were people out there supposed to work on the house, I went there to inform them that the house had been condemned. I didn't tell them I had to quit work, I didn't tell them I had to leave, I didn't have authority to do that, I didn't want them to know before they spent any more money or whatever, the house had been condemned, it was to be, to make it end to be demolished. That's the one time I went after God.
Well, you know, it's been a few times, well, because I I spoke with Jody several times about Greg and I finally met Greg, I was here in June. And we were, me and my husband and my cousin, we got some equipment and we, you know, there's pecan trees, you couldn't even see the sidewalk inside the house, so we had all of that and all the brush cleaned from all in the gates because it was overgrown. He came across the street and was talking to one of my cousins and my cousin was like, oh, good, she's here, now you can meet the owner. And he was telling me to say, oh, they're going to knock your house down, they're going to charge you thirty thousand dollars, I said, well, I haven't got a letter. I haven't got a letter, I've owned this house for two and a half years and every time I send somebody, it has been a problem and I have spoke with Jody several times about this gentleman. You know, the last man that I sent over there, it was him and his crew, they were going to do the sheet rock in the inside, here come Greg across there, stopped him again, don't put your equipment up in there because they're going to knock that house down and if it's in there, they're going to take it all. So everything that I'm doing, I'm getting stopped and it's not like Jody hasn't spoke with me because I have him locked in my home. So everybody that I talk to, I lock in. So I even the last time I left here, I called him from the airport before I left. This gentleman walked up on me now, the last time we spoke was before Christmas and he was like, just call the police on him. You know, I say, well, that's what I'm going to have to do, I'm going to have to call the police to stop him from stopping people because I can't do nothing with the house.
Yeah, we don't, we wouldn't have any recourse ourselves with Mr. Henry on that.
Right, so what I want to do is, only thing I want to do is for you guys to approve where I can work on this house and bring it habitable, because the neighborhood, it's okay, it's okay, but it'll stay okay if we're not allowed, if we purchase stuff and not knowing what it is when we purchase it. Because, you know, I I told him, I said, well, we wasn't told, but everybody I spoke to, even at the treasurer's office, they was like, they didn't tell us, they're the one that do it, they're the ones that condemn it, so when they send it to us, they're supposed to say that it's condemned, it didn't say that in the auction. So all I want to do is fix the house up, where somebody, if somebody, a family needs a home, I want to be able to put that home there and they can live in it, but I want to be able to fix it without him keep bothering us.
You know, the county sells it back to Texas too.
Right.
That has nothing to do with us having to complete that property already. So we wouldn't afford the new owner that's already been baited in the past.
Yeah, but if I've had that house for two and a half years, if I don't know and if when I purchased the house, it wasn't told to us and then I called the treasurer's office and the treasurer's office said that it came from Henrietta, so Henrietta is the one that condemned it, they were supposed to let us know because we wouldn't have sold property.
That's not true.
That is exactly what they told us.
Property no matter what taxes are due, that's nothing to do with the property being condemned whatsoever.
Okay, well, y'all need to talk in between counties of, you know, because she told me it was Henrietta's fault, so everything, the ball just keeps getting passed.
It's not being passed, I'm telling you, the county will sell it every time when it comes three years tax due, no matter what we do to it.
Okay, well, I'm on it now, June will be three years and I've I've been coming out here myself fixing on it. You know, Jody was like, well, the house is just ugly, why don't you knock it down, I mean, why knock it down, it's a it's built in nineteen twenty five, why not save it?
What, how many, how long has it been baited, do you remember?
It was at the December twenty one of two thousand twenty one, maybe twenty one.
And I bought it in twenty two.
June twenty two.
Which means that there was plenty, there was plenty of time for them, there was plenty of time for them to know if it was invaded or not.
I've got pictures that you can fish, something peruded of me.
I think, I think, I mean, if it was for abatement in December, there's no reason why Old Mogie shouldn't have known that it was, and I mean, I'm thinking this Greg guy, because he owns three, three sides of the road there, he wants that side.
Because he did it against.
Regardless of what he does, he's not getting it, you know what I'm saying, something will be built there, you know, he he's just a nuisance right now.
Yeah, because he was like, I own this, that, I said, but you don't own this and you keep stepping on here, telling people that they can't be on this property. So every time I've tried to do something, I'm having a problem, but I don't want to get in there and then get into it with him, I'm too far away from home to go to jail.
Sure.
You know what I mean, I got grandkids, I don't have time to be trying to bail out because this man won't stay on his side of the street.
I feel, I feel for you.
You know, I just need time.
Feel bad that spent money and didn't know about all this.
And I'm still trying to spend money, I mean, the house, we went in and cleaned the whole house out, I mean, that house is horrible, as you can see from those pictures. You can see the floors, it actually had a refrigerator in there, a stove, cabinets, I never seen a water heater in the bathroom, I had to rip it out because I was like, that's dangerous. You know, I want to be able to just refab the whole house, you know, and save it, you know.
Yet we can't hang on. So it's item.
Do you have family here in Henrietta, right?
Yes, in Oklahoma City and Foley.
You don't have any in Henrietta though, that's over there?
Don't matter, she's fifteen minutes. Yeah.
And I've been over there and I spoke with you, I, you know, I go to the auctions, I own forty seven pieces of property, I think there's fifteen of them here in Henrietta that I do own and, but all my houses is in Old Mogie. And there's, I mean, even the code enforcement down there, I'm like, Sean, why you buy that piece of junk, you know what I'm saying, it's not even worth it. But after I get dealt with it, you know, it only takes me three months, after I get dealt with it, it's like, oh, can we take pictures, this is so beautiful and all this other stuff, it's like, because what you see as junk can't be beautified if it's just given the chance, but it's like, we're stuck in this roadblock and and then I can't remember who she spoke with, because she was like, well, I didn't receive anything, it was like, oh, well, we don't have to contact you, you know what I'm saying, we talked to the previous owner, but if I'm the one that's paying the taxes on it every year and you guys are sending me the taxes, then why should you not contact me about anything?
Taxes, these are, like I said, these are two separate things, taxes versus the property already been baited.
This year, I didn't even get my taxes.
We could have already torn this down if we got, if we had the money.
Tell any county that taxes, we have.
I didn't even receive it this year, so I'm thinking, the way my brain works, I'm like, oh, they tried to rob it, let me go online and pay for it. So I just went online and paid the taxes, but I don't understand, on Google, they assessed the property at eighteen thousand, that property is one thousand.
Yeah.
How did you?
And what you're trying to figure out, because I know I did purchase a piece of property down in Old Mogie that two months later, they knocked down and said that, you know, they didn't catch it in time before I went to the auction, you know what I'm saying? But that was like two months later, they knocked it down, yes, only paid maybe a hundred and forty five dollars for this little piece of house that's on this property, you know what I'm saying, and I paid forty five hundred dollars just because you guys want to knock it down when I could have just ran the car through through the house, you know, I'm saying, I did it myself for less than forty five hundred dollars. But even talking to the code enforcement down there in Old Mogie, they was like, even then, you know, if the house was, you know, was to be knocked down, I don't see why it's take, it's never taken like two and a half years to knock something down.
We have, I would say we're a decade behind on tearing houses down in Henrietta, we're we're starting to, you know, get traction, just the amount of money, resources, time to get it done is why we haven't got to that house yet, we we get to the most dangerous and most problematic houses. Have a key.
First.
First.
Because it's not waiting.
Ones that have been on fire and that's those sort of things are the ones.
Yeah, I drove around Henrietta where that house is, I'm like, oh, no, they were, they were in my mind.
Well, I think we have.
Over there, you know, I'm just like.
Well, like, sixty one was yours, there's been another two hundred since then.
We've got about sixty on the list right now to be torn down, so.
Wow. But I'm literally sending people, I don't even know, I didn't even know if the man was going to go drop that that six hundred dollar garbage can that I had dropped over there, you know, I'm paying people, so I'm trying, you know what I mean, I just need time. So that's why I flew out here, you know, it's cold too late.
Unfortunately, this item, this item was just an item, it's discussion only, not discuss an act, we can't do anything, it's probably, so we can't do that, it's just for discussion, so.
Okay, so what do we wait on, so?
If you keep making improvements and meet with code though, you can bring that back to the council to get it put back on there, if you're making steady improvements, if you hear something now that you're making improvements to, we want things to stay, we want structures to be here and we want houses to look good.
That house, that house would have been done.
Done.
A long time.
I ain't reached now.
You know what I'm saying, I get people, my houses, it takes them three weeks to complete the whole.
They call the police.
You know what I'm saying?
That's what I'm.
Well, yeah, I'm calling police and then he's going to have a problem, you know, otherwise, but this is.
Yeah, I brought my electrician with me because I was like, if they tell me I can start working, I brought my electrician with me, I need you to go in here and then you open up these walls, because some of them open, but I'm going to rip it all out. I will, I'll get with him, I got the party and trust me, I'm calling, texting, you know, like, hold on, this man is over here. Can you tell him something, why I have to, you know, and be better now?
Be the one, if he's on your property, the police will call about Jody.
Okay.
His trespass.
And he, he don't have a problem, he come right, he didn't even know that with me, he walked and I said, can I help you? I said, but you don't own this, stay across the street. Well, I own the transmission, I own, I don't care about all that. I'm trying to throw these pecan trees that's way up in the air. You know, and then the neighbors was like, we ain't seen that backyard all the way through in years, you could see all the way through it now. You know, and and it's like a box, like, yes, that's the bathroom, I'm going to rip that off, it was just set there.
Stick it on the back?
Yeah, just stick it right on the back, that's coming off.
Miss Williams, appreciate you here, we appreciate you trying to fix things up, we like.
Okay.
But can we, Jody, on it, I mean, we can't do anything to give you any time tonight, but you can talk, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item number fourteen, discuss act on approval of abatement of property located two oh sixty Scott Street Lake Drive Acres, Henrietta West fifty foot of plot block twelve, lying south of I forty and west fifty foot of lot thirteen and all lot fourteen, block three, remainder of block three and Henrietta T W P, owned by Catherine Bit Hill and Sir Pharaoh Henley. Council approve ninety day extension for owner to clean site at October fifteenth, twenty twenty four P M.
Yeah.
No.
What, any change?
There's been no, there's been no changes.
Drove up out there like Friday, it's somebody's abatement.
I was, I was pretty sure there wouldn't have been any. So move the second approved item number fourteen for abatement, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number fifteen, discuss act on approval of abatement of property located at nine oh one West Cummings Browns Henrietta Lot One, Block Eight, owned by Jeremy Scott, George Moore, council allowed sixty day extension to make significant improvements at November nineteen, twenty twenty four P M.
I'm here to ask for an extension because I, my car broke down in December and I couldn't make it up here on the weekends to work on it and there was a miscommunication between Jody and I on, on, I didn't get his message about what he was suggesting to be done until last week, so. I would, I would request an extension to get, because every time I tried to get the vehicle fixed, it would break down, I've spent four hours in Old Mogie yesterday, or Friday, last Friday, because it broke down on me. And I was stranded for four hours. Oh, it's sixty days, you haven't had a way to get here? No, I haven't had a way to get here, I begged everyone, I even tried to rent a vehicle and they denied me service.
If you got anything to the property, just you haven't done anything.
I haven't been able to get down here because I don't have a vehicle.
Jody has been in contact with you?
Uh, some texts recently.
I texted in November, I texted in December and I texted him this month.
Do you think another sixty days, I mean, what?
I would appreciate it.
Do you have a car now or?
I, I'm working on it, I've almost got one to where I can come to get down here, but I have to finish getting it fixed.
If we give you another sixty days and there's not significant improvement, I'm pretty sure we'll probably go to abate.
I understand.
Because we gave you the sixty days and you didn't do anything and you told us you would do significant.
And I tried to get down here and it broke down, I tried.
Change the motion, we never said two more days.
Thank you so much.
To move the second to to approve another sixty day extension on item number fourteen, poll please.
Steve.
Yeah.
Vernon.
No.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number sixteen, yes, item number sixteen, discuss act on approval of abatement of property located at sixteen oh four West Broadway, Glendale, Henrietta Lots Twenty, two and enclosed, twenty two, block eleven, owned by Sheila Christian and Megan Austin.
Yes, I'm asking for an extension, we started working on it some this evening and I just, I moved two hours away, my son and his pregnant girlfriend are living in the house now. And I bought it so my kids would have a place to live and not have to worry about renting stuff and they're expecting their first baby and so we've been trying to get this house fixed up to code and it seems like it's one thing after another, I got the yard approved, cleaned up and approved and now it's the house, I'm just asking for some time to get it done.
So all utilities on that?
Mm-hmm. Utilities are on.
Water.
Water, electric, yeah.
Sixty days, would you make a huge improvement, Sheila?
I would try my hardest to be down here, like I said, I moved two hours away.
But what about the people living there?
Yeah, my son's been working on the inside, he doesn't know much more, much about the structure on the outside, how to do it, but he's doing his best, he's working on the inside, has made great improvements, the yard looks great and he's doing what he can, he's only nineteen. But he's doing what he can and with him expecting his first baby, he's just really, really stressed out about everything coming down on him.
We give you sixty days, can you come back to us with significant improvement from that sixty days?
Yes, and if he wants to drive by it tomorrow or something, he can see that we've already started on it this evening.
Jody, is there any windows, I'm sorry, any windows in that structure? Uh, you have a, ma'am?
Yeah, and we are, we are actually going to, because there were big windows and they were broke when I moved it, when I bought it, and so we're going to take out the big windows and just put small windows in.
And that's on the west end of the house, it's all open, where do you?
Which?
On the west, front of the west end.
It's awful cold, you're living there.
That's the garage and it's, there's, it's, it's trash, it's trash when I bought it, we had to pay a five hundred dollar dumpster to get the yard done and I just don't have the finances right now, it's a running of dumpster to get the garage cleaned out, we're working on the roof, we're getting all that stuff fixed before I can do that.
I make a motion to give her a sixty. Time to work on it, if all the utilities are on, somebody could run it, it's better than most of them we get.
Thank you.
So move the second to allow a sixty day extension for abatement on item sixteen, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Hannah.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just an act on the ba, approval of abatement of property located at nine oh two and a half West Broadway, Keys One, Henrietta East twenty foot of North fifty four foot, Lot Ten and North fifty four foot, Lot Eleven and Twelve, Block Four, owned by Baldridge for rentals.
Mayor, council, my name is Stephen Baldridge, I represent my family, we own this property, we bought it twenty years ago, it's been a challenge, it's the only property we have in Henrietta. We, I won't tell you the, all the history, but I currently have a resident in one of the apartments there, efficiency units and they're all electric. But I've had issues in the past with people breaking in and busting my sheet rock and I put in, you know, double lock doors. I just got this notice and I am, I do have a sewer main issue and they're replacing that, I have a tenant, he's a Creek citizen and he's been in there for about ten years. My neighbor has a house next door and when they rent their house, they, I have a parking structure next to my apartment building, they trespass on my property.
I want to add, their tenant actually gives permission.
Hold on, they leave all their stuff there and I've cleaned that up six times over the years and so I've got to come back down and clean it up again and so this was the first time I, I mean, I I would have to say that this property is outside, out of line and that's my fault. But what I'd like to do is, I want to save it, it it does need a roof, it's not leaking, but the backup people seem to break in upstairs, I haven't heard that lately, but we would like to donate that property to Al's ministry and that's why Mr. Al's is here. He wants to do some work, would you like to speak about that?
Greetings. Signified by Stephen Baldridge, they would like to donate and so I'm working on a deal with my brother who's large construction in Houston area. And the plan is that we were to get it, that we do a full rehab, they could brand new again in in a short amount of time, so that's a deal that we're working on, pending that once it transitions, transfers ownership, we can move forward on it.
So Stephen, if we give you sixty days, can y'all, we'll get that done and get work going on it? In fifty days to show us that y'all have interest in getting that structure fixed?
Sure, if you can give us closer to ninety, I'd be across, like I said, it'd be fully funded, you know, and so it's workable.
So on the main agenda.
Whenever, yeah, it's that one age, yeah, but yeah, we definitely get started, get looking good.
What are you going to put there if you take it over?
I, we're going to redo the the apartments, it's got four, one bedroom, one bath apartments, we redo the entire thing.
What would you, what was your intentions be with that property when you got rehabbed?
I'm sorry?
What would your intentions be with the property when you got it?
You're going to keep it apart or are you going to change it?
To rent or to, for rent, rental purposes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but the, everything would be brand new.
Uh, my ass, he's bought properties here before, I've dealt with him, those properties, you know, everything he said, he saw it, I'm taking care of it.
The reason you got vicarans living in your apartment is because no one's there, I mean, that's the reason.
Well, I have a person.
That's it though.
Yeah.
Councilwoman, I have a person that lives there, but we have fine citizens that break the windows out, I have still my air conditioners, you know, and we have a challenge in Old Motive too.
I make a. I make a motion, we give them ninety days to try to get it in order.
So it'll be the April agenda, not the, not the pageant above. That'd be the April agenda, not the May.
April agenda, sorry.
Second.
To move the second to give ninety day extension on item number seventeen, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Dana. Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item eighteen, discuss act on approval of abatement of property located at seven oh two Genoville Wilson Henrietta Lots Sixteen to include twenty and lots twenty-five to include. Thirty-seven, block seven owned by Shirley Wilson.
Okay, so they reached out to me too, Jason's here, um.
I spoke with Jody in July, um, I had shoulder surgery, it's a pretty massive shoulder surgery, I'm just now getting over it. Uh, Jennifer knows the physical condition for the rest of my family members.
But y'all are planning, what I was gonna say is they're planning to tear it down.
Absolutely.
They want it gone as well. They don't even care that it's abated. They thought that we literally took the property once we abated. And what I explained to a sister today is what happened is it gets tacked on to your taxes if we do it. It's not one that's gonna be abated in the next few weeks. Their intention is to tear it down, and I told them if they get to it, tear it down before we abate it, then that doesn't happen.
Yeah, uh, we have, it's a, there's a really good metal roof on it. We did that when my father moved in. Um, we're trying to get that off safely. Uh, and then we're gonna be just tearing down the rest of the property, but it's gonna be my hand. I I I don't have the money. I'm a single income now, my household. I'm, I'm doing what I can. I work six days a week. I work, uh, at the mail. Um, it's just, it's a, it's a lot of work. And we did let it get, get out of control unfortunately, but, um.
And you don't even have a problem with it being abated?
No, not at all. Yeah, we, we're gonna tear it down, and my sister's gonna be putting a, we're gonna be putting a trailer, a trailer on it, a, a. New trailer on it, not a crazy trailer or anything like that, so.
And if if they tear it down in time, it's just like any other structure, it's what it is.
Are you including the two Al buildings as well?
Yeah, all, all property.
All built, yeah.
She said y'all.
My sister Jackie has been every once in a while. I, you know, I live in Mutunka. I don't have a, a lot of time to get over here, work on six days a week.
It works post office.
Yeah, I work post office, so it's, it's difficult, but.
We got a motion and second approved of eight, item number eighteen, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Thank you, Jason.
Vernon.
Yes.
Dana. Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number nineteen, that's an actual approval of abatement property located at Center Street, Warden Camp, Henrietta Lots Thirty Six to include Thirty Nine owned by. Tealidge Brown.
Jody, you have a picture of this? I couldn't find it today. There's, there's no street address to, no street.
Yeah, I, you know, I know where it's running.
Will we try? And, and I guess.
Nobody showed up? We don't know where it's at.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah.
Could you even see it because of the trees? Is that why I couldn't find it?
Oh, it's, uh.
Oh.
Stand up motion to second approved of abatement, item number nineteen, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Dana.
Jennifer. Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Item number twenty, discuss act on approval of city manager.
Just touch base on some of projects, but one, the booster station is now operational. Uh, we're not having a babysit like we did on the hill. The bypass on the hill is, is working fine for us. Uh, we still got a few bugs, calibrating stuff to work out, but at this time, we're not having to babysit at home. Twenty-four hours, like we have from recent years. Uh, so we're pretty pleased with it. Got a couple tie-ins on merit. To tie that line into, that's coming up the recent, in the coming weeks, other than that, that, that restoration to perfect work. Uh, sewer line out west of town is complete. Everybody's tied into it, that's on, uh, which will be the old Kellogg's. Yeah, station, the house, the motel, it's handling, it's handling everything okay. Casey's tied in, and I believe all Casey's, Jody, gonna step out. Uh, March first, I think, was gonna be their open day. Now they're talking like February thirteenth, so they're gonna open.
Yeah.
So, so that, that, basically that water line, other, sewer line, other dress up is complete and operational and is working great for us. Uh. You seen where we tore down three houses, and we started going to the old, uh, dog food place down here. And we're, we're actually recycling it, we're scrapping it out, you know, we're getting more money back off it. Yeah, and it's, yeah, you know, and and we, you know, we had problems, people staying in there, living in there, so that eliminates that. That, uh, that place, um. Uh, I think, I think everybody was pleased with the eight inches or nine inches of snow we got, but the streets were cleaning pretty fairly quick. And, uh, you see, we used a hundred and thirty tons of, of salt and that we, we, we got plenty of stockpile of salt and sand. But, uh, the guys did really good. They worked, they worked hard at it, and they were, you know, they got, they went to Bed Lake and got up early.
Yep.
Uh, real good, real good group of guys. Uh, other than that, everything else is, uh, is moving right along. We're looking, entertaining, uh, some. Uh, uh, conversations with some, uh, wasteful people about opening a transfer station back over. And, uh, so that's really early on. I put it in my report there, we got to see that, and I'll come, if we come up with a agreement with it. So, you know, instead of people fitting couches, mattresses out on the curb, we can't pick them up, they'll, they'll have an opportunity to bring them to a transfer station. That's early in the works, but we're really looking at maybe partnering with somebody else.
They made it for.
Move the second to approve, item number twenty, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Dana. Jennifer.
Yes. Item number twenty-one, discuss act on, discuss act on new business. No new business, item number twenty-two, council members comments. I want to just, uh, go back to the, uh, the snow clearing and. Road, uh, work that was done during that large snow, uh, I believe that was probably the most work we've ever had done in the city. In, uh, a lot of years, that was a lot more work than, that's gone in in the past than I can recall. Two thousand nine or ten was a big one. Sorry, but yes, if they move, they move fast efficiently, I think, and it pre-treated a lot as well. And, uh, really good. That was a really wet snow too, so it was a heavy, heavy snow, but.
Very thankful for the city crews we have. We have a really good team right now. You're running a tight ship.
Jennifer, you have anything?
I don't.
Jen?
Second. Been good on the road. I'm proud of you coming in. I know we've had a lot of problems about the dogs.
Actually, you're not dealing with, and I guess you're much. I was gonna say, um, five dogs last month went to the no kill shelter. No one called and asked and said if a dog was missing. Um, thirty-three calls altogether, said, well, well, and Gerald's not sitting around, he worked it. And I checked with City Hall, last year nineteen dogs were licensed in this town. So as far as we know, there's only nineteen dogs in Henrietta. So people need to, uh. Well, I mean, we need to figure out, um, they've been licensed, they need help, get them vaccinated. And I talked to David. There are some places my wife is real good at this stuff, is you can go and they'll give you a discount, help you out when you have, because my dog just cost three hundred dollars. Get his, all of his shots, but if you wait till a certain time in the month, you can get a deal, they'll take a whole lot more damage, and the vets will help you out. I think she goes to COVID to do that. But I was telling him, you know, if someone gets their dog impounded, and you don't have seven days to do something. And if we can figure out a way where that, if you know it's your dog, and we schedule an appointment for you, and we prove you've gotten vaccinated, then you'll be okay. Because nobody wants to lose their dog. And if you can't afford it, we'll figure out a way or get you. If vets doesn't need the seven days, you need to keep your dog for a couple weeks, so you know, we'll schedule an appointment for you. So you can get your dog over, get taken care of, so you're legal and right and licensed. It's like a license, you want seven dogs. So I think we're willing to work with everybody so I can keep your dog and check and all the license and vaccination.
How much is the license again?
I think it's seven, seven or nine. I'm, I was on the nineteen, give my dogs a license. You know, and we, them dogs, it's cheaper to use them. It really is, but we want to give people opportunity to adopt them. And, uh, you know, get their dogs back. We're spending a lot of money doing that and everything, so we'd really like for people to get their dog registered.
Well, and we weren't in Pittsburgh County, what happened to that?
Well, that's what we're taking us to.
That's what I saw on here, but I was thinking you were saying we weren't doing that, because that's a no kill shelter.
And exactly, yeah. And it costs us fifty dollars per dog.
Yeah.
So we, we spend a lot of money to keep from putting these, having to put these dogs down. So we really like people that either go adopt them or, or, you know, get them licensed.
No way. I don't even know who our dog catcher is. That's true, he does, the best he can. I can't imagine going out and chasing dogs.
He, he has a lot.
Just know that we have a lot of at-large dogs, I guess, that are just, he's a dog lover.
He, he does a real good job, and, and, you know, it just ain't dogs. It's snakes, it's squirrels, it's, it's everything. And I can give you, you know, in, in your packet there, it shows the list of, of all the calls for animals, and he stays busy. And then he does other, other stuff too, so he does a real good job. And, and, you know, here. I don't know, so I even should say this, but, you know, if your dog gets out and gets out and gets out, he'll return the dog back. You know, I mean, they.
He knows them by name.
That's right.
They're one that escaped, and he'll tell you all that, so and so's dog, and he'll go put him up for you. He isn't trying to hurt dogs. And I see that on Facebook all the time, and people say, oh, my God, why did he return it? Well, if yours got out, you would hope that he would do the same.
Absolutely. In, in my time here, I'll call him and give an address. He'll tell me the dog's name. He does, because he picks them up, you know, he, he carries.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, please get your, get your animals tagged.
What people want, maybe they don't want us to care or to return them, but. If your child's in the street, we don't run over them.
And, and we gotta remember too, we're a pound, not a kennel.
Yes.
It's, it's, we would, you know, it should cost a lot more for us to be a kennel. So, but we do hope as long as we can, we give everybody a chance. Unfortunately, we just can't keep them forever.
No. So David, I have a question. If we wanted to do a story for the Henrietta Freelance Paper about this, do we need to contact?
Absolutely, call the office and, and I'll get with you, and we'll get with the dog catcher and the chief of police and get.
We'll get that down so we can get some information out to the people, what they need to do to get their dogs taken care of, and where they go if they just fear or things like that.
Alright, thank you.
The feed stores sell the same vaccinations for twelve dollars and ninety-five cents, so to let people know if they can't.
And they'll tell you how to give them.
Yeah, I mean, it says on the, it's a fine long time. Doctor Ross, twenty-five bucks, all three shots, and over Chicago.
There we go.
All my dogs go back.
Just, just come to City Hall and get them tagged.
For every.
But you're a responsible dog over here. We're not. Or I'm not. I'm talking about people who have their dogs.
Maybe we should do a vaccine clinic, if we could get a vaccine clinic set up. See if we have some vets that may volunteer to come do a vaccine clinic, if we provide the vaccine, and that way they can certify it or whatever.
And actually, Dr. Ross would probably do that. Or one of his staff. We had one in, uh, Mounds, and he came and did it.
Just remember, people.
Maybe when you do your story, you can get.
You know, if people, these dogs, we pick them up, we're keeping them for a period of time, and, you know, if it's my animal, I'm, I wanna know that.
Oh, yeah, I sure know me.
As long as we're taking down there, nobody is, they're not claiming them after a week. Shaving your estate. Alright, I just wanted to know what my dog looks like, so you can bring it on.
Item number twenty-three, a jerk. Got a motion on twenty-three, you need a second?
You need a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Move the second approved, item number twenty-three, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Henrietta Municipal Authority, regular meeting Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, six thirty PM, Central Center, one fifteen South Fourth Street. Roll call, please.
Dave, there, Vernon.
Here.
Dana. Jennifer. Here.
Here. Item number one, discuss act on approval of consent agenda. A, financial reports for December twenty twenty-four. B, minutes of meeting held in December twenty twenty-four. C, claims for the monthly settlement twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move the second approved, item number one, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Dana. Jennifer.
Yes.
Yes. Item number two, discuss act on approval of payment to OWRV RF dash oh eight dash oh one five dash DW. Amount thirty-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars, fourteen cents for monthly payment.
Motion to approve.
Move the second approved, item number two, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Dana. Yes. Michael.
Yes. Item number three, discuss act on any new bus, any new business? No new business, item number four, jerk.
Motion to approve.
Move the second approved, item number four, poll please.
Steve.
Yes.
Vernon.
Yes.
Dana. Jennifer.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Thanks for coming, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate you.